It's my new favorite color with gray hair. I give my most compliments.
It is a pretty color.
Thank you. So, this is my signature color.
That's the color of my champagne socks.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation, it will be given this morning by Commissioner Jerry Carl, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
May we bow? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come before you today, Lord. Lord, we ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your patience, Lord, most of all, your mercy. We just give you praise for this group of people. We pray a hedge around this building. Lord, give us what we need to do your work. Christ's name, amen.
Let your leaders through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, again, good morning, everyone. I think we have a number of speakers today. What we will do, as your name is called, if you will please approach the lectern and give us your name, address, and any organization that you represent. You will have, because of the number of speakers, we will have three minutes for you to speak, two and a half minutes. There will be a timer that will go off and to remind you, if you would, to please conclude your remarks. If you would, please respect the decorum of the meeting, and we would ask that there be no applause after the speakers. But again, we're happy to have all of you here today, and we welcome you. Who is our first speaker, Kathy?
First speaker is Kimberly McKean.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Well, this is pretty important, so I have it written down on my phone. I'm pretty sure you have an idea of why, you know, why we are here. Mr. Benson's comments, of course. And I hate that he's not here, is he?
No, he's not here.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. But we, he's actually sparked a movement here. And what we are doing is, you know, first off, I want to say that I'm very thankful to Ms. Ledgood. You are my district county commissioner. Thank you so much. You're a brilliant woman. I respect you deeply. Ms. Hudson, I also very much idol you, and you two women have led the way at Mobile. So, thank you for being role models for women. And Mr. Carl, man, I want to go fishing with you.
Let's go.
You have a big heart, man. A great guy. So, I just wanted to let you all know that first, and I appreciate that you, both of you ladies, did stand up and speak against Mr. Benson's comments. Thank you for doing that. You know, I would have liked for it to have happened sooner, almost immediately, because we all know what he said was wrong. And, you know, the fact that it took three days, I'm still thankful you did it, but still, y'all represent our voice, and so we should depend, you should speak up sooner for us, for your LGBT community. And Mr. Carl, we have not heard from you yet. And you are running for Senate. And believe it or not, this is a very small group of LGBT community members and allies in this room that vote. And because you have not made a public comment against what he said, we can only mean or assume that that is, you agree with him. And we will no longer recycle hate from Mobile and send people up to Montgomery or Washington who do not support all of the people, okay? We would really like to know what you think. You know, after the meeting, that would be, that would be great.
Ms. McKean, and any other speakers, if you would address your comments to the chair, and you can reference what you're speaking about, but address them directly to the chair, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. President.
That's your 30-second warning, ma'am.
Okay. We're asking for a non-discrimination ordinance, okay? We need that here locally. We're not protected nationally or statewide especially. Now, we need, we want y'all, one of you, to please stand up and be a lead sponsor for a non-discrimination ordinance, which will include, we can sit down and do it together, all the language, that it includes that we won't lose our jobs for being gay, we won't lose our houses because we lose our jobs for being gay, and that we will not be denied public services. So, is there any one of you three today that will stand up and do what's right for Mobile? Because we are one of the most diverse cities in the state, and we should reflect that.
Ms. McKean, we follow federal non-discrimination laws, and, you know, I've asked the attorney to give us his comments on where we stand and what the possibility of any additional resolution. We don't, we don't have the authority to pass an ordinance, per se. We are a creature of the Alabama Legislature, so anything that we approve has to, they have to give us the authority to approve it. But as far as a resolution or anything like that, I think it, from what I'm understanding, any language that we would put in a resolution would mirror what's already in federal non-discrimination laws that we follow in our employee handbooks and all of our contracts. And I'll let our attorney, Jay Ross, speak to that, since you've brought that up as a possibility. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, Commissioner Hudson is correct in that the, an Alabama county cannot pass an ordinance unless it's specifically so provided by the Legislature. That is very different than what municipalities can do. Municipalities have the authority generally to pass ordinances that are, provide penalties if the intent is a legal one based in law. So, the county commission cannot pass an ordinance that has penalties if someone were to violate it unless specifically provided by state statute. Number two, it is important to note that Mr. Benson is an elected official and is not employed specifically by the Mobile County Commission, and nor does Mr. Benson answer to the Mobile County Commission. He answers to the electorate and to the state of laws that all elected officials go by. So, even if the county commission could pass an ordinance, it would not impact or have any weight under current law, under what the county treasurer does. In addition to that, you know, the county employees handbook applies to employees in all departments, administrative engineering and public works, specifically prohibits harassment based on protected characteristics, including gender, sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation. County appropriation contracts likewise prohibit that, and we, and as a recipient of federal funds, passed our grants department, we are specifically prohibited from discriminating on basis of protected characteristics. But that doesn't provide this commission any authority or oversight over Mr. Benson.
Can I address that?
Yes.
Okay. I understand that. We, yeah, Mr. Benson probably answers to the governor, and we all know that the state of Alabama does not include hate crimes, did not include hate crimes for the LGBTQ community. That, I get that. And maybe if you can't pass this ordinance for us, we can get an ordinance surely through the city then, right? Through the city council? And if that is possible, we still need your support. We still need one of y'all to stand up and be with us to go to the county, I mean, to the city, or the legislature, whatever. We're starting this conversation. Just join us in helping us get this ordinance or protection here, because you know what? I know that it's in your policies that people can't be fired because you're gay. Well, I didn't know that. A lot of these people didn't know that. Ask a school teacher. School teachers will not come out. They will not come to rallies because they will lose their jobs. And people are targeted for being gay, all right? I may not look that gay right now, but you take a very feminine guy or a very butch woman, and you put them in any atmosphere, they're going to be signaled, they're going to be targeted because they're easily identifiable.
Ms. McKean, can I get you to wrap up your comments, please? There are other speakers coming behind you.
Can, can we count on you? Can we count on any of y'all to help us figure this out? Because you have the experience.
Ms. McKean, we are, there's no one, no commissioner or no member of the county commission that supports any type of discrimination. All of our regulations, all of our contracts, we don't tolerate any kind of discrimination. We're already there. As far as Mr. Benson, you can't legislate what's in the minds and hearts of people and what they say. And he, the only, the only people that he answers to are the voters of Mobile County. He was elected, duly elected, just as we were, by the voters of Mobile County.
Yeah.
And so, we can't control what other people say. But all I can tell you is there are no, I mean, you can't, no one could stand here and cite or reference a discrimination that has occurred because of anything that's happened here at Mobile County towards anyone that's in the protected classes. So, I have not heard it the nine years that I've been on the county commission, that this has transpired. So, we feel like we are already doing what you're here today requesting. So, thank you for your comments, and we're going to have to wrap up and move on to the next speaker, but thank you for being here today and sharing your thoughts and your feelings, because we want to hear. It's important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
The next speaker is Reverend Sarah Siles. I'm sorry.
Last name?
Reverend Sarah Siles.
Siles?
Good morning.
And if you give us your address and the organization, if you are here representing one?
Yes, I'm Reverend Sarah Siles. I live at 1661 Lamar Street, right here in Mobile, and I'm representing Cornerstone Metropolitan Community Church. We've been a proud member of this community since 1985, affirming all LGBTQ citizens, and I just want to thank you all for hearing us today. I was compelled to come and speak today because we've been silent too long, the people in my church. I stand before them every week, and I remind them that the only way to root out evil is through love. And I believe that silence is complicity. So, your failure to speak indicates that you condone things that happen, and I found it very interesting this morning that we began this meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, claiming liberty and justice for all, and my people have not had liberty and justice in this country and in this nation. And I understand the political climate of today seems to condone hateful rhetoric, and I ask you respectfully to speak out against it whenever it is heard, your leaders elected by these people. And we chose you because we believed in you. We ask you to believe in us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is, I believe, Teri or Carrie Osborne.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Teri Osborne. I'm representing Rainbow Mobile. I'm the secretary on the board.
And your address, please, ma'am?
Ma'am? Oh, it's 105, not 105, 2084 Sea Cliff Drive North in Daphne, Alabama. Wanted to address the discriminatory comments that were made earlier in the week by Mobile County official, and I just have a story. Once upon a time, there was a great city beside a bay. They had a most wonderful dog park. It was the most beautiful dog park in the world. It was, had everything a dog could ever want, hydrants every 20 feet, wide pastures to run and frolic in, mechanical cats to chase, foul smelling areas that they could roll in to stink. Just a wonderful place for dogs, except for Chihuahuas. Chihuahuas could not come to the dog park. They were forbidden for whatever reason. There were people who thought they were vile creatures, abomination unto God, and just didn't like them. There were even veterinarians who would not treat them, even if they'd been run over by a car. They couldn't buy them treats. No one would sell them a Chihuahua cake. It was just a terrible situation, until the city stepped in and passed ordinances to protect the Chihuahuas, because after all, Chihuahuas are just another dog. Science approved, they're just like other dogs, their genetics were the same. You can breed them with the other dogs and get some sort of Chihuahua mix, wonderful sweet dogs. Yes, they can be loud, they can be annoying at times, but, you know, the LGBTQ community is somewhat like the Chihuahuas. We are discriminated against all the time, and I do appreciate that the city has all the anti-discriminatory practices in place that makes us feel so much better than you do, and we do appreciate that. We just want to run with the big dogs. We want to be treated just like all the other dogs. We want to play, we want to run, we want to enjoy life, we want to love who we love. We want to have jobs, we want to not worry about somebody coming at us. We have no power, we may be 5% of the population. We do not control the Senate, House, Governor, on the state or federal level. We cannot pass law, we cannot pass ordinances. We are at your mercy to a large degree. And without y'all's protection, without the allies of the cis and hetero community, we don't have a lot of hope. So, we have to have y'all on our side. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica Banks.
Good morning, Ms. Banks.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Banks. I live at 306 Stocking Street, Apartment B, and I'm representing Rainbow Mobile. I'm their community outreach coordinator, and this is in response to Phil Benson's comments. Freaking queers get all the sympathy. Sympathy? We don't want sympathy. We don't want others to feel sorry for us. Sympathy? This does not equate attention, being truly seen, being understood. Sympathy used in this context is a knee-jerk pity response. A poor thing, bless your heart. Women, people of color, the disabled, they got all the sympathy at one point, too, right? Would you use a slur to describe, to demean, these groups of people, too? No, of course not, not now, right? Or at least not in public. If this is the type of language you use to describe people, especially those you're supposed to be serving, language which smacks of the vernacular used by high schoolers to put one another down, this shouldn't come from an adult, let alone a government official. I shudder to think of how colorfully you speak of freaking queers in the privacy of your own home. The movers and shakers in this community, my community, are freaking queers. There are children, youth, who are freaking queers. I am a freaking queer, though I'd redefine it to passionately, unwaveringly different. And yes, we passionately, unwaveringly different people will continue to make ourselves known to garner all of the sympathy we can, until we have the same equal freedom to live and thrive as anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Ellen Sims.
Hi, Ellen. I thought that was you.
Good to see you, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Hudson and, and all of you. I'm Reverend Ellen Sims, pastor of Open Table United Church of Christ in Mobile, and I'm here to ask Mobile County Treasurer Phil Benson to apologize for his recent verbal abuse directed at thousands of our citizens. Yes, thousands in Mobile County are people who identify as LGBTQ. They are teachers, business leaders, doctors, nurses, construction workers, artists, and church members. I am pastor to many. Mr. Benson's bigoted, intractable, and incendiary public remarks reveal he is certainly not qualified to exegete Genesis 19, which he erroneously uses as a proof text to condemn gay people. I am sorry he's not here today, but I've brought a four-page exegesis on Genesis 19 that perhaps someone would pass along to Mr. Benson. Perhaps he is not qualified to serve in public office. I understand it is not within your purview to do anything about that. It is within the voters' purview. Nevertheless, every elected official has a voice, has a voice that affects culture as much as it does our laws. And I serve a church that has birthed a support group for LGBTQ teenagers, because their suicide rates are so high, and the obstacles they face so extreme, and a word of compassion is needed in the public sphere. I ask Mr. Benson to apologize sincerely for the harm he has caused, and that he educate himself about his community and his responsibilities, or resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, yes, if you'll hand that to our staff. Do we have any?
Yes, we do. Jeanetta Curry.
Good morning, Ms. Curry.
Good morning. That was close. It's Jeanette Curry.
Jeanette.
Jeanette.
Jeanette, thank you.
I live at 63 South Fulton Street here in Mobile. I came today primarily to show the diversity of our group. You know, you've seen some of our speakers, but to show you that there are older people who are affected by the things that people say. Mobile is my home. I've been here for almost 50 years. I like Mobile. I like living here. I like the people here. I understand the politics, since I've been here for quite a time. I worked for the city for 35 years, and I appreciate the protections that I had as a city worker. The thing that I find most important, and I think a lot of people should be able to relate to this in this room, is that being vocal is important. Sitting around, sitting anywhere in your home, in your office, and wherever, and not speaking out when you agree with something, or when you disagree with something that someone has said, jokes, off-color jokes, gay jokes, it's important, the, our ability to speak out is what is important about us, living in a community, making people feel safe in our community, letting them know that even though you really have no control over laws and regulations that apply to the citizens in the county, it's important to speak out, to let people know that hate speech will not be tolerated. Instances of violence against anybody in the state, for whatever reason, will not be tolerated in Mobile County. I've lived a while, and I've seen lots of changes, and those changes have occurred because people spoke. They stood up to be counted in every community, every race. The only people that are going to make any kind of change in the United States are people who speak up, take the responsibility, vote, let their elected officials know what they believe in and what they want their elected officials to do. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Hollingsworth. Hollingsworth?
Without due respect, can I go to the end of the line? Because I'm kind of on the other side, and I'm just wanting to hear everybody else.
I think she is the last one.
Our issue, okay, well, I think that would be agreeable.
Olivia Parton.
What's Olivia's last name?
Yes.
Parton?
My name is Olivia Parton. I live at 14 Common Street here in Mobile. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak today.
Certainly.
Mobile has adopted the slogan, "Born to celebrate, to attract tourism and business to our city." I love that slogan because we are born to celebrate. This slogan is warm and inviting, and it creates an atmosphere of excitement, but it should also create a feeling of inclusion for all people and businesses that want to come to Mobile. We have a rich history and a vibrant culture, but most of all, we have a diverse and colorful population that should be supported by our elected officials. I'm simply asking for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rebecca would like to speak now? That was the last speaker.
All right.
If you'll give us your name, address, again, please.
I'm Rebecca Hollingsworth. I'm scared to give my address because of hate crime, because I've had them over seven times in the past two years.
Are you a resident of Mobile County?
Yes, ma'am. Now, I ain't got nothing against...
If you would just temper your comments and address the chair.
Okay. I have nothing against gay rights whatsoever. I got caught up in a situation where my husband was that way, and because of it, I lost everything I had seven times. I've been run down by the masses. I can't get no legal help, and every time I try to stand up for myself, I get run down by the masses. And so, being that they run me down, I would just let them know, I have nothing against the gay community, but why did they have to take all my rights away? And if after this meeting, if I could speak with you, just to see what direction to go in to get my life back?
You are having, I mean, you're...
I don't think it's more or less LGBTQ...
I'm not sure what the issues that you're presenting are.
Against heterosexual, I think it's more hate than anything. But I've had my land stolen, lost two jobs, lost my right eye, can't get disability because my ex is doing a DBA in my name. That's identity theft. I need to know how to get out of it.
Well, I don't know how the county commission can help you afterward, if you'd like to have a conversation with our county attorney. He may be able to at least give you advice and point you, I understand, and point you in the direction of who might be able to assist you.
Thank you. That's all I need, is assistance.
Okay.
I ain't no hater.
Thank you. Thank you all. Is that it?
That was the last speaker that had signed up.
Again, your comments today are heartfelt. We certainly understand where you're coming from. You know, personally, I feel that people are going to disagree about everything. You know, that's been my experience, certainly in the public sector, is there's always going to be disagreements, but it's how you handle those disagreements. It's being respectful, it's being courteous, and being kind to other people. That's the most important thing, and I think that that's the message I'm hearing today. That's what... That's what this community of people are looking for in Mobile County, is tolerance and respect. And it's unfortunate what's happened. You know, I can't apologize, and neither can the other commissioners, for the actions or the comments of someone else, but I can tell you that those comments, the derogatory comments, do not reflect Mobile County and our staff and the commissioners. You know, that doesn't reflect us. And so, I just want you to know that, that we are striving for a community of respect and tolerance among all of our citizens. That's the only way we're all going to progress, is if we can get along and respect one another. And so, I thank you all for being here today, for sharing your stories. All right, we, if those of you who would like to leave at this time, we have a business meeting next, so we'll give you just a moment or two to slip out.
Kimberly, are you going to hang around a little while?
Yes, sir.
If you would, I'd like to talk to you.
I would like to. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item number one, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report for the period ended May 31, 2019.
This public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number three, approve amending the holiday schedule to include Friday, July 5, 2019, in accordance with the State of Alabama amended schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, adopt resolutions stating Mobile County's intent to self-collect all tobacco taxes, including those currently collected by the State of Alabama Department of Revenue effective October 1, 2019, and directing the interim county administrator to immediately forward a certified copy of such resolution to the State of Alabama Department of Revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, authorize letter agreement with PFM Asset Management, LLC to perform investment advisory services in the amount of $30,000 for Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, amending the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to add project and estimated cost as follows. CIP 2019-003B, renovation and ADA compliance Grand Bay Historical Museum in Library District 3, $736,807.98.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve cost of election officials for mandatory training on new voting equipment for the 2020 election cycle for a total cost of $27,915.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve EFP 16119 contract with opportunity for entertainers and performing arts in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds to help support the MOB Music Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve amending EFP 303-19 contract with the Board of School Commissioners to benefit Meadow Lake Elementary School to use remaining funds to purchase technology equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve annual maintenance agreement with Business Systems and Consultants, Inc., BSC, in the amount of $1,653 for the period July 22, 2019, through July 21, 2020, for microfilm scanner for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve maintenance contract with the Crowley Company in the amount of $4,060 for the period July 28, 2019, through July 27, 2020, for digital book scanner for the Revenue Commissioner's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve CDP 126-19 sponsorship with Africa Town Community Development Corporation in the amount of $2,500 from District 1 funds for its 5K Africa Town Bridge Challenge Event.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve CDP 21219 sponsorship with Sims Women's Club, Inc., in the amount of $100 from District 2 funds for its cookbook fundraiser event.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve EFP 23719 sponsorship with Girl Scouts of Southern Alabama in the amount of $500 from District 2 funds for its Leading Ladies Award Event.
So moved.
Second.
15, approve transfer application of BRN, Inc., for off-premises retail beer and table wine license to MBK 2019, Inc., for Donna's Grocery, number 2, 10510 Paget Switch Road, Irvington, Alabama, 36544.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve application of Eminence Promotions, LLC for special events retail liquor license for Southeastern Combat Championship, 7701 Hit Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36695.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve EFP 23819 and EFP 31219 contract with WP Davidson High School, PTSA, in a total amount of $2,500 to be divided between District 2 funds in the amount of $1,000 and District 3 funds in the amount of $1,500 for the World Food Competition.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve CDP 127-19, CDP 213-19, and CDP 319-19 sponsorship with Greater Mobile Chapter of the 9th and 10th Horse Cavalry Association, the Buffalo Soldiers, in the total amount of $2,500, to be divided among District 1 funds in the amount of $1,500, District 2 funds in the amount of $500, and District 3 funds in the amount of $500 for its 153rd anniversary event.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, adopt resolution authorizing request of the Sheriff's Office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare as surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve amending the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to add project and estimated costs as follows. CIP 2019-006, renovation of elevators 7, 8, 9, and 10, Mobile Government Plaza, North Tower, in the amount of $2,400,000.
So moved.
Second.
21, accept grant award from the Corporation for National and Community Service in the amount of $336,119 for continued funding of the Senior Companion Program for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, with a county match of $137,293.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, accept grant award from the Corporation for National and Community Service in the amount of $361,978 for continued funding of the Mobile County Foster Grand Parent Program for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, with a county match of $103,671.
So moved.
Second.
Number 23, approve professional services agreement with Airwin, Inc., in the amount of $5,000 for preparation of a Volunteer Guardian Program Public Service Announcement for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number 24, approve joint purchasing agreement with the town of Dolphin Island, the town to be responsible for payment for all items purchased off the county's annual bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 25, approve assignment of PHNJ Architects to Project CIP 2019-006, renovation of elevators 7, 8, 9, and 10, at Mobile Government Plaza, North Tower. The proposed fee is $163,800.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve change order number two with Sterling Contractors, Inc., for BMP 2017-008, security improvements for Mobile Government Plaza.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 28, renewal of software, approve renewal of software maintenance with Environmental Systems Research Institute for ArcGIS licenses at a cost of $3,800 for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Number 29, approve annual software support and maintenance with HLP, Inc., Chameleon Software Products for licenses for one server and two workstations at a cost of $4,800 for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, adopt a resolution that all department-specific departmental rules and standard operating procedures effective in the Administration Department and in the Engineering and Public Works Department prior to July 1, 2019, not inconsistent with the employee handbook, shall remain fully effective and applicable to employees of those departments.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, authorize agreement with Burke Klein Peter, Inc., to provide professional engineering services for Project Gold Mesa 1803-01, sediment reduction paving of Dolphin Drive, Perch Drive, Johnson Road, Henry Johnson Road, and Sunset Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, authorize agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., to provide professional engineering services for Project Gold Mesa 1803-2, sediment reduction paving of Gulf Boulevard and Ware Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number 33, approve EFP 162-19, EFP 239-19, and EFP 313-19 sponsorship with the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama in the total amount of $5,000 to be divided among District 1 funds in the amount of $1,666.67, District 2 funds in the amount of $1,660.66, and District 3 funds in the amount of $1,666.67 for their "Our City, Our Future" 2019 telethon.
So moved.
Second.
Number 34, approve rescinding action in the May 13, 2019 minutes, agenda item 52, agreement with the University of Alabama for payment of a portion of tobacco tax proceeds.
Should be South Alabama.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Number 35, approve revised agreement with the University of South of Alabama, University of South Alabama, for payment of a portion of tobacco tax proceeds.
So moved.
Second.
36, approve appropriation agreement with the Community Foundation of South Alabama in the amount of $25,000 for its capital campaign.
So moved.
Second.
I have a comment. These last three, and it may be because our interim administrator is out of town, but these were added to the agenda after our conference meeting on Thursday, and I was not aware that they were being added until I saw it on the agenda. Is, can I get, if we're adding anything between these two meetings, and I know we have add-ons periodically, but these are some pretty big expenditures. So I would like to, and I'm looking at you because you're sitting in Glenn's seat right now, but I'd like that message to get back to our interim administrator, that I'd like to be well aware, I'd like to be notified of any additions to the agenda that, between meetings.
Yes, I would delay that message.
Thank you.
Number 37, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Tracy Thomas Place, and approving preliminary and final plat of Brooks Place, and approving preliminary and final plat of One Mile Place, and approving preliminary and final plat of Schoolhouse Branch.
So moved.
Second.
Number 38, authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deed and easement from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Number 39, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction, Inc., Project CIP 2013-040 and CIP 2015-006E, Mobile County Soccer Complex Phase 1, to increase the contract by $17,782.80 for the addition of 6-inch sewer laterals and 8-inch ductile iron water main for the purpose of providing future sewer service to the properties along Lee's Lane. The cost will be reimbursed to Mobile County by the Mobile Area Water and Sewer System.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Project MCR 2018-102, Chickasaw Streets Resurfacing, and Project MCR 2018-103, Citronell Streets Resurfacing, Project MCR 2018-105, Mount Vernon Streets Resurfacing, and Project MCR 2018-108, Satsuma Streets Resurfacing.
So moved.
Second.
Number 41, authorize acceptance of a grant award from the Federal Railroad Administration for Project CCP 2018-004, upgrade to U.S. Department of Transportation Railroad Crossing, 727-808C, on fiber road in the amount of $175,925, with a match of $175,926, matched for Mobile County, subject to final legal review, matched to be divided among County Lensing Fibers, Inc., and Eagle South Services.
So moved.
Second.
42, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 26 in the amount of $60,300 for Project MCR 2016-001, McDonald Road Additional Lanes.
So moved.
Second.
Number 43, adopting a resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public street, James Road, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Creola, Alabama, pursuant to City Ordnance Numbers 2018-017 and 2019-019.
So moved.
Second.
Number 44, adopting a resolution consenting to annexation of a portion of the following public streets, Bennington Drive, Darby Creek Drive, London Dairy Drive, Weston Drive, Solley Road, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Mobile, Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
Number 45, adopting a resolution consenting to the annexation of a portion of the following public streets, Fire Tower Road, Griffiths Road, Illinois Street, McCrery Road, Oak Hill Drive, Red Creek Road, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Sims, Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we have an add-on at the request of the DA. And I believe you received a memo from the Finance Department, and the add-on is to approve application of the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs on behalf of the Mobile County DA's office for the continuation of the Domestic Violence Initiative Grant for the period January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020, with a local match. This is pending review by the Finance and Legal Departments.
So moved.
Second.
Number 46, commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner Carl?
I'm good.
Just have a couple of things. One, we have a list of retirees for the month of July. We have from Metro Jail Brenda Walker. Brenda has been there for 27 years. From Camp 98, Stephen Byrd, 35 years. Camp 98, Leon Lee, 20 years. And Camp 98, John Watson, for 37 years. Do we have anybody left at Camp 98? We're losing some longevity there. And we also have from the Sheriff's Department Gregory Johnson, 11 years. We certainly want to thank these individuals. We certainly want to thank these individuals for their service to the county and wish them the very best in their retirement, and let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to announce that we have the Distinguished Young Women National Finals. The fifty young ladies who represent the different states in our country are all in town this week, have been actually all this week, or last week, most of last week, and will be in town all of this week. The preliminaries will be on Thursday and Friday at seven PM at the Mobile Civic Center, and the national finals will be at seven PM on Saturday. So if you've never been to a national finals or even preliminaries, you will be absolutely amazed at the talent and the abilities of these young women, and you will feel much better about the future going forward when you see what the future looks like with these young ladies and their accomplishments. So I would certainly highly recommend that. We do have an Indigent Care Board meeting following this meeting, so we will move forward and adjourn this meeting if I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this meeting stands adjourned, and we will immediately go into Indigent Care Board meeting.
Item number one, approve minutes of the meeting of May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund at May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Funds available, one hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned.